Si potevam zavolati tuto srečenje na poznatost? To je vrlo... Što je za štěstí? Samozřejmě, že posledními dnem jsou poslání výboru. Máme nějaké věci. Vezmeme si to. Vezmeme si vyřešit některé věci, které jsou na naší části. Zvyklým časem máme sletectví v 6:00 hodinu před tajemnou sličností. Jde jen o to, aby se věci podlejeli. Vezmeme si to. Přesunuli jsme to do 5:00 hodiny, protože je jasně, že je hodně zájmu, co se stalo za poslední pět dnů. A vy musíte mít hlas v tom. Proto jsme tady. Vezmeme si to a sdílíme s vámi, co víme. Máme nějaké poslání s tajemnou v dnešní době. Dálečné poslání, které obsahuje všechny naše hlavní hláveři. A já předpokládám, že se dostane šest, čtyři nebo osm dalších lidí z tajemného vládu. Víme více. A my víme i list věcí, které jsme měli, dokud nezačali. A vždy budeme sdílet to všechno později dnes. Dnes. A pak budeme zajímat otázky od všech obyvatel tajemného města, kteří chtějí se s námi představit věci, které jsme vám dnes řekli. Samozřejmě, že to je příjem. Jen jako zpráva, zavolám vás na přijetí, jak i v každému z nás v sletectví, a stojte a přijďte ke mně. Děkuji. Takže, pokud si to připravíte, máme jen pár rychlých věcí. Trvat bude asi tři minuty. A pak se pojďme na to. Chtěl bych vám představit našeho tajemníka, našeho pomocního tajemníka, našich kolegů v sletectví. Anita Nettemberg. A našeho nového sletectva, kdo se ptá, proč je teď na tuto stranu, po sedm dnech na straně. Myslím, že řekl, že chce, abychom dal druhým. To není pravda. Nic. Kevin, přicházejte na stranu. Pozvěme se, pokud to vám příleží, na pár rychlých věcí a pak se pojďme na to, proč jste tady.
Zvyklým časem rozevádíme výbory. A tohle je srečení, ve kterém rozevádíme výbory. Takže, pokud to vám příleží, Kevin, já se přesně pustím do motionu. Převezmím, že poznáme Jim Leahan jako představce tajemného sletectva v Norfolku. Všichni... Všichni, kteří jsou na přítešním pohodě, řekněte "An".
An.
Převezmím, že poznám Anita Nettemberg jako představce tajemného sletectva. Pojďme na to. Všichni jsou na přítešním pohodě? Převezmím, že poznám... Jste připraveni? Převezmím, že poznám našeho nového sletectva, panu Roche, jako člen tajemného sletectva. Všichni jsou na přítešním pohodě? Tohle je tradice, kterou máme už vždy, 40-50 let, když rozevádíme pozice na stranu. Je to dobrá systém. Nikdo nezůstává v jedné pozici nebo představce strany za určitý čas. Takže každý tři roky nebo každý rok se změní. Je to dobrý, zdravý proces. Takže s tímto, máme jen, myslím, jen jeden další věc, která se odehrává v 6:00 hodinu dnes. Máme poslání výboru, které bylo postaveno. Musíme to provést. Bude velmi krátké a velmi bojové. Takže, pomozte mi s tím. Takže, pojďme na důvod, proč jsme tady. A já se stojím, protože jsem krátký. Jsem 6'2", když jsem začal v tomto. Nejsem si jist, jestli jsem špatný. Chci jen nějaké otevřené komentáře dát, protože vím, že je to velmi neobvyklá složka podmínek a velmi alarmní pro mnoho lidí. Prvně jsem se o toho poznal v týden včerejšního večera. Myslím, že všichni jsme se o toho poznali v týden včerejšního večera. Nevěděl jsem nic o tom. Všechna moje telefonové zvuky, jsem dostal všechny ty emaily. Mohl bych vám říct, že za první tři hodiny včerejšního večera jsem nebyl připraven. Potřeboval jsem tři hodiny, než můj žena mi zpustila z rodiny do domu. Byla to alarmní věc. Nebylo nějaké předpokladu o tom. Nebyli jsme kontaktováni s správnými stranami. Když se toto bolestí odehrává... Já se budu přestat dát krokem a říct, že nemohu nic udělat, pokud nebudu bojován. Nikdo to nemůže. Jdeme v jiné roli tady. A musíme se zajistit, co se stalo a jak toho řešit. A dělat to, co nejlepší, aby minimalizovalo závislost na naší komunitě. A to je tam, kde jsme právě. Nebudeme se do politického dialogu dnes zabývat. Nemůžeme to dít. Toho dokážeme absolutně nic. Přitahujete se k tomu v každém směru, kterým můžete. Ale v souvislosti s tímto srečním dnes, není to něco, na kterém můžeme se věnovat. Musíme se zaměřit na to, co víme dnes. A dnes měli jsme dobrou pozvu s mnoha lidmi. Justin bude sdílet to. Musíme se zaměřit na to a pak zajímat všechny otázky. Vezmeme si to o obyvatelství tajemného města v Norfolku, protože je to naše věc a naše komunita. Takže se toho, kteří tu žijí, omezíme. Pár dalších myšlenek o tom. O tom, co jsme dnes naučili. A já nebudu zabývat detaily. Ale prosím, pochopte, že vám ukazuje... To je příjem pro všechny z nás. Byl jsem tady 40 let. To je nová zkušenost pro mě. Jsem na straně, jak mohou říci, příliš dlouhý. Ale 18 let. To je první. Ale tohle je ta záležitost, kterou máme. Atíž na našem úrovni. A takže, musíme se zajistit, jak to udělat. A to je tu, kam se naše energie bude zaměřit. Bolest je pryč. Je to skryté. Je to na základě. Ale to nemusí nám pomoci. Musíme se zabývat a nebýt protivný tajemnému vládu. Nemůžeme. Nemůžeme jít k ní, pokud se dostaneme k neprotivnímu vládě. Takže, tohle konferenci začala dnes. Bude být mnohem více konferencí o tom. Ale to je tam, kde jsme dnes. Mluvili jsme s jinými tajemnými městami. Plainfield je velmi pomáhající. Jak víte, zkušeností jsou i tyto. Sletectví Jeffa je dobrým příteli. A on sdílel velmi dlouhé příspěvek o tom, co se s nimi stalo. A byly některé věci, které museli se zabývat. Jak si předpokládáte, jsou některé stále otevřeny. Ale oni také sdílel některé dobré věci, které se z toho staly. Takže, v jeho případě, nebylo to celý alarmní proces. Ale se šli do stejného cesty, jaké jsme šli. A se kolem toho snažili a zvládli nejlepší z toho, kde jsme. A v 40 letech, kdy jsem žil tady, je to skvělá komunita. Je to pro skvělé lidi. Je to příjemná, příjemná komunita. A kdekoliv se toto výsledí, budeme se kolem toho snažit a dělat to, co nejlepší. Protože to je ta záležitost, kterou máme. Nežádali jsme o tohle záležitosti. Ale jak odpovídáme na tohle záležitosti, je úplně v našem kontroli. Úplně. Takže vím, že bude trvat čas, abychom začali bolesti a všechny emoce z toho. Doufám, že to bude konečně a že všechny se spoluprací v pozitivní směru, abychom udělali, co tajemná vláda nám představuje. Takže s tímto, chci předat Justinovi, aby vám řekl, co se stalo. O, zapomeňte. Vím, že někteří z našich sletectv, také chce nějaké komentáře dát. Zapomeňte.
Nebojte se. Děkuji za přítomnost. Poslouchala jsem mnoho. Poslouchala jsem mnoho lidí na Facebooku a nějakým způsobem myslela a dělala mnoho myšlenek o tom, co bylo nutné dnes říct. A jsem vytvořila velmi krátkou a chtěla vám sdílet. Ano, jsem si přečetla knihu Anti-Fragile od Nassim Tallem. On propone, že opačné fragile není robustní, ale je vlastně anti-fragile. V obtížných časech některé firmy, organizace, vztahy neúspěchují. A některé rostou. Než to přetrvávají, rostou. Záležitosti vlastně jim přináší fragile. Je jim silnější, což je anti-fragile. My jako komunita jsme představovány nějaký stres a nedostatek. Samozřejmě nevšichni budeme souhlasit na tom, jak, co a proč, když se pokračujeme. Ale můžeme si vybrat rozsah, bez toho, aby nás oddělilo. Naše konferencie můžeme spojit, i když jsme rozsahli. Jim, Kevin a já jako sletectví a v spolupráci s naším tajemníkem a pomocním tajemníkem jsme se s tímto ideí odporováni. Je to africká pravda, která říká: "Jestli chcete rychle, jděte jenom. A jestli chcete jít daleko, jděte společně." Norfolk anti-fragile není přesně na základě. Takže pojďme, že Norfolk je silný a jdeme daleko společně. Děkuji.
Chtěl bych říct, že Kevin Roche je nový člen. A doufám, že se budu pracovat s tajemným sletectvím a pomáhat ho sdílet komunitě.
Děkuji, Kevin. Tohle má zvláštní pozornost. Takže, jen pár minut. Prosím, pochopte jednu věc. Všichni, kteří pracují na straně, jsou volantíři. Já jsem volantíř, každýkrát si říkám, že toto slovo nenávidím. Jsem volantíř. Nikdy jsem nezískal zisk z tajemného města, ani nikdo z tajemného vlády. Jdeme tady, aby se snažili dělat to, co nejlepší, a to je ta záležitost. Tohle je ta záležitost. A takže budeme velmi dělit se na tyto věci, jak to nejlepší, pracovat s tajemnou vládou, dostat to nejlepší a minimalizovat tyto věci. Pokud se s tajemnou vládou zabýváme, bude nám závislým možností udělat to, co potřebujeme. Pokud se věci změní a apikety změní v budoucnu, to je skvělé. Samozřejmě neztrácíme to v žádném smyslu. Musíme se toho podívat, co myslíme, že se stane a připravit se k tomu. A máme mnoho skvělých lidí. Žádný z vlastních policejních žádných, firem. Všechny školy, superatinisty jsou všichni součástí tohoto poslání dnes. Víme, že máme důležité věci. Školy, číslo jedno na list. Důležité věci. Víme, že zdraví je věci. Abylo, že byly některé minimalizovány v poslání dnešního večera. Firem řekl, že mám důležité věci v rámci pracovníky a poslání, které může mít na této speciální fázi. Máme více otázek, než odpovědi. Ale dnes dostali nějaké informace. Myslím, že všichni bychom však všimli, že jsme dělali nějaký pokročení. Mám více. Tajemná vláda se souhlasila, že se tady dostane a zaujme komunitní sličnosti s všemi vám, před výměnou tohoto programu, jakým může být. A jsou připraveni to udělat. My jsme připraveni vám říct všechno, co víme. Co neřekneme, je to, co nevíme. A tohle myslím vážně. Nebudeme specifikovat. To všechno přidává k tomu, že je to divná a špatná. Jenže nemáme čas. Jenže nemáme. Nemůžeme to udělat. Takže, pomozte mi, pokud to můžete. Jste bojováni, jak dlouho potřebujete. Ale doufám, že to bude rozpadnuto, že se bude rozpadnout a můžeme pokračovat, v jakékoliv záležitosti se bude vypadat. Protože, atíž na tuto chvíli, vypadá, že tohle se stane. To je vše, co jsme dnes říkali. Takže s tímto, já se předám Justinovi a vám budeme updatovat na informace, které jsme dnes přijali. Dobře, všichni. Justin Cassino-Davis, našeho tajemníka. Takže Jim, jsem se na několik věcí zpochybnil, ale jenom bych byl jistý. Měli jsme dnešní srečení. První srečení bylo s officály z administrativního a finančního úřadu, z úřadu školy a školení. A také z executive officeho oficeho ošetření komunity. Měli jsme představce z tajemného města. Já, člen sletectva, policejní a firem. A jejich leadership team, a také superatinisty MPs a KP. Následující srečení v návštěvě bylo s vyloučenými officály, zahraniční občany, vlastník Von a další. V souvislosti s logistikou, chci zpochybět, co bylo řečeno v Jimovi. Poptali jsme, že vládní team se dostane k komunitě a zaujme komunitní formu. Takže tohle se stane nějakým okamžikem v jiné čtvrti. Komunitní formu se tady děje. A Jim mluvil o tom, že tajemný sletectví sdílel informace. Poptali jsme, aby se updatili o FAQ, které nám představili. Budeme to publikovat na našem publickém webu. Budou to také dostupné na jejich webu. Bude na našem webu updatená hlavní strana. Bude tajemná města a všichni, kteří se zajímají, updatěni na našich sociálních médiích. Zvýšeně na Facebooku. Takže tohle jsme dnes naučili. Takže já se první budu mluvit o straně. Protože vím, že jsou některé generální otázky o straně. Team takto definovalo, co to je. To je overflow strana. To je odpověď na případ případu overwheLM shelter system, který je v této kapacity. Je to více než 7500 rodin, které se nachází v shelter systemu. A je to velká rostoucí list červených červených. Velký skupina z těchto lidí je na... Připravená na overflow stranu je na této listové. Lidé, kteří se nachází na overflow stranách, jsou klasifikováni jako nejsou v žádném klinickém nebo zdravotním riziku. Takže všichni, kteří jsou zdejme zdraví, 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 zdraví,
Hi, Jack Oliver, you're in a very foreground place. So I have two questions. The first one, I'm a little confused about. You said the average stay that a family will be there is between 45 and 60 days. Did I hear that right?
Yes, sir.
So when a family comes in here, they would enroll their students, their children, in a class, in our schools for only 45 to 60 days, and then they move them out? Is that how that's going to work?
That is a question that we post. Because if you think about it logically, you know, that's a nightmare for the schools. They're aware of the concern, but I can only share what they said. It would appear if they're here and they're a school age, they under the law are eligible for our schools. How that will work, I have no idea. We have clearly brought that up. They're aware of it, and I know that there will be extensive conversations about how this is going to work with the schools. We don't have those answers.
Okay, the second question I have is, if you have 150, let's say you've got 200 or 300 students, and they speak 10 different languages, how is that going to be addressed in the school system? Is somebody thinking of a plan for how these kids are going to learn if they don't speak English and they have 10 different, you know, there's 10 different languages associated with them?
In our second meeting today, we addressed some of those educational issues specifically. It's too soon to answer that, but we're definitely making sure that we're prepared to support the students to the best of our ability and to make sure the impact on the schools will not be a negative one.
Thank you.
Lucy Bullock, Seeger, King Philip Trail, and just thank you all for public service. It was hard, especially in trying times. Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that question about healthcare. So, did you say there is healthcare facilities at Bay State already? So there would be presumably healthcare might be provided on site, so there would be less overflow into the other facilities in the area?
Just wanted to clarify. Their plan is to have, there is office space to help provide elementary sort of infirmary services. You know, if there are any health concerns that require more care, their plan is to transport them to those other locations. But that is something that they are working through. We don't have any further information than that.
Understood. I just want to have an update on the opening of the Norfolk Hospital. I know everybody is missing that, so. No?
No.
Okay, I'll ask it along with them. The other thing I wanted to follow up on, Justin, I think you said there was 7,500 people on the, in the shelter system right now. Are they all asylum seekers or are they also homeless folks that are residents in Massachusetts?
There's a mixture.
Okay, that's good to clarify that it's not all residents and asylum seekers.
Yes, and actually, this is a good point that Jim had mentioned. The group that's coming here as well, the state did indicate it was a mixture as well, although they largely could be asylum seekers. We do not know the demographics or the makeup, but that's what they indicated.
Oh, that's a new thing to understand, is that it might be a mix of asylum seekers, residents, all of that. Oh, okay. And to confirm, there's no, I just want to make sure I'm very clear. There's no sewer tie-in to the town? It's all self-contained on the Bay State site?
Correct. Department of Corrections operates their own utilities. It's electricity, water.
Have you been speaking to authorities about the ability for groups that want to organize, support, or donations to be able to visit the site? Or if the town is interested in helping to organize some of that to alleviate other...
In terms of helping the folks that are housed there, I think all the help we can get would be welcome.
Okay. And just in your meetings, if you could ask them if they have a plan or would be willing to meet with some folks in town to make a plan for how they would access and security for, you know, the residents, the residents of Bay State, the people who are going to live there and all that kind of stuff, that would be helpful.
There have been a number of emails and questions about how they can help, and that's the good side of what hopefully we'll come out of this. But yes, I know some of the churches are talking about it. There's a lot of opportunity to help these folks.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. John Seamus, 35 Robin Road, Pheasant Hill Estates. I have a couple of questions, or statements rather. The school system in its current structure and the plan to lay off some teachers and to restrict services as is, I know that you don't know the exact number of students that are going to be put into this situation. I have some concerns, obviously. I guess my main question would be, the state is subcontracting out its safety, it's subcontracting out its food, many other services. When you are in the correctional facility, they provide state-certified education. There's resources that, third-party resources, that are not community resources, that specialize in that. Companies such as Justice Resource Institute, many others. Why does this community have to have our tax burden and our teachers pick up this when it can be easily subcontracted out?
Yeah, I can tell you what we know. I was part of the meeting this morning. Anita was part of the meeting this afternoon, and I know they spent more time on the schools this afternoon. They were more on the, what's the more mechanical administrative pieces this morning. I do know that they have facilities there where they are going to set up programs to help people move into society. Technology and classes, things of that nature. A lot of what they call office space, which can be used for educational purposes and were in fact used for educational purposes. Anita is from the school system, so she'll know the school laws better than I am. I don't think we have a choice there, but let me turn it over.
It would be illegal for us to sort kids by the homeless kids get educated over here and then Norfolk kids get educated over here, so that would be illegal. But the state, to your point, which is a good one, the state is understanding our needs that we can't just absorb all these students without some support from the state. So we are leaning into the conversation that you're talking about, and so that it doesn't happen just like, oh, here you go, and then the state walks away. We are working with them and partnering with them to come up with some solutions that will benefit all of our students.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Dan Heller, 500 Drive. Thank you all for opening this up to the town. I know that a lot of people have a lot of questions about a lot of things. One question I have was, is there an expected federal footprint? I know that we understand that this is going to be kind of a, you know, it could be Commonwealth Massachusetts residents, could be migrants, could be a number of other things. If it is migrants, I would imagine that there's going to be some kind of federal footprint associated with that, and how is that going to be created in the town? Or is that kind of still up for debate?
I don't know that we have an answer to that. I don't know how to answer that. It's on the list of questions. The problem we have is our list of questions is longer than our list of answers. We had a good start today. We got a lot of information we didn't know. We opened some good dialogue. They were aware of the issues that we have. One is obviously financial. This gentleman was asking about the school. It's a legit question. We don't have the room. We've got a crowded school. We're talking about expansion for our own kids, and we're going to bring in more kids. So we've got to figure out what that means. And we have a set budget. The fire chief has limited personnel. All of these things revolve around money. So one of the reasons I said that, wow, we may have our own emotional feelings about this, at least at this table, we've got to let those go because we've got to work with the state to get the best deal, I don't know how else to say it. We want to get as much out of the state as we possibly can to eliminate the burdens on this town. That's our job.
We all definitely appreciate that. That area is not terribly well-lit. I know we mentioned that there wouldn't be a burden on public infrastructure. Is there an expectation that there'd be additional streetlights or anything along like those lines in that area? Or would that fall to the state to make sure that happens? Since it is a state facility and they are the ones implementing this program?
That would largely probably be by the state. There is no plan. We didn't discuss that just yet. We haven't opportunity to discuss that just yet. They did indicate, as well as in the FAQ, there are plans to be in curfew, so I think that will mitigate some of the late evenings with the lighting. But yes, there is a well-lit over there.
My concern being more for as the winter months come around, if this is a six-month to a year kind of thing, I mean, that's a very, that's the kind of area, to be honest with you.
It's definitely an item that we had as part of our public safety questions. We had a large list, we didn't get to that one.
And it seems like this is going to happen. It is state property. I fully understand that you guys do not have control over state property the same way that, you know, states don't control federal property. It's an embassy in the town. And I appreciate you guys keeping the politics out of all of this. It's not going to be constructive. One other question I had is, are you guys planning on pointing like a town liaison? I'm not sure if we have a town emergency manager or someone along those lines that can kind of be the point person between this facility and then you guys, our public safety partners and things like that?
No, we definitely are going to have a plan in place for that. I am the town administrator. I obviously work in conjunction with the select board. I probably would be the direct liaison, but there will be many liaisons because there's a lot of components to this, public safety as well. We did ask for direct contact for public safety, for example, et cetera. So there will probably be multiple liaisons that will have to be in place.
And just one other thing that I'll leave. Do you guys, do we have a town emergency manager?
We do have an emergency management director. Yes.
Okay, just curious. I work in emergency management. I'd be happy to help in any way that I can. I've worked disaster response, district managing in 14 years. So whatever I can do to help, if this is going to happen, we should take the best of it and do the best we can to support these folks. Thank you.
We do have an emergency management director, as Justin mentions, and we do have an emergency management plan, which is a good thing because who knows when we might need it. But this facility is, the initial level of response, I wanted to clarify this, is with state police, because that's a state-owned piece of property, so our folks are going to be backup to that process. We're not the primary response to that.
Tim Allahan, 70 Rockwood Road. I think most people's concerns are on resources, obviously, school, police, that sort of thing. I know families in town who are trying to get help for their children now in school, and they're meeting with people to see if the kids are qualified or that type of thing. Understandable, the resources are strained. Remember, 140 kids and multiple languages like was just brought up. So how are we going to decide that, okay, we need the resources for these 10 kids for one thing, and these 10 kids for another? Does it go to the taxpayers' kids? Does it go to someone else? It's like, what's the process for the decision? Because ultimately, I think the biggest problem is everyone feels blindsided, and this is happening all over the place. There's no information. So one day, we're going to wake up and be like, oh, this program's going to go, and it's not going to benefit any of the kids who are having reading problems who are going to need an extra teacher. And we're going to take the money from this program and put it to this program. So it's like, I think it needs to be really clear how these decisions are made, because it's very scary and a lot of us are worried about what our kids are going to miss out on and what resources the town will miss out on. And that's the big thing. That's where everyone's concerned. It's not like, oh, don't help people bring here. It's going to happen, these resources. So.
Anita has probably more expertise in this area than I do. I was just saying, that is my biggest concern. The thing I worry about the most is the schools and the kids. I mean, our kids are the greatest asset of this community. I mean, that's what we're, this is what we're all here for. We came to this town. We want to raise, I've got seven grandkids.
Yeah, yeah.
I get it. There's nothing more important, and their education is critical. And this presents another opportunity for us to find a way, because it hurts me to think that any one of the Norfolk student, or any student, I don't care where they're from, any student doesn't have the opportunity they should have in the educational system. I mean, that's just a mandate that we should never let down. And so it's a function of not only staffing, space, and funds. And we're limited in all three areas. And this is one of the reasons we've got to work with the state hand in hand, because we've got to somehow figure out how to open those coffers to try and alleviate some of this. I'll turn it over to someone more knowledgeable than me, but that is, at least for me, my number one concern.
I don't know about more knowledgeable, but I think that, first of all, knowing the Norfolk public schools, and I've worked there, and my children have gone through Norfolk and King Philip, the decisions for what kids need are based on student by student by student. And it's never like, well, this kid needs it more, so this person doesn't get that. But I understand there's going to be a need for additional services, and we are in conversation. We don't know the answer yet because we're at the very, very beginning, like we've had like three days, well, six days, four, five, six days. And so we've asked the questions that you're asking. We've asked those to the state. They know about our problems with space. We talked today specifically about ELL teachers. Along with these challenges are going to come strengths for our Norfolk students, right? Our students are going to be exposed to people from different cultures that will make us stronger and wiser. There will be strengths that come. There are definitely challenges. We're having those conversations.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't answer the question of the process.
Well, so help me understand. Okay, help me understand. Help me understand the question.
What's the process that's going to be done? And like, how are these decisions going to be made? And honestly, you just gave me kind of the fluff answer that like, no, I'm not here. School's other culture is, well, that's just, I don't care. I don't know how we're going to consider this, how we're going to hire a Spanish teacher, a Chinese, or someone who teaches Spanish, Chinese for the people who come in versus the kids who need a reading teacher? How's that decision going to be made? And the kids who need the reading teacher are the taxpayers' kids versus the other people? Like, we need to know how these things are going to be decided. And we're not saying like, oh, you can't do this, you can't do that, but make it clear, because there's not a lot of clarity. We've just heard, hey, this is happening.
I think we just have to be honest. We were just informed Saturday directly.
I know you're just informed, but more nearly, you're going to fly to Italy.
So let me also...
Honestly, you haven't been able to talk to them.
So let me also say this. Our King Philip superintendent was at the meeting today, as well as our MPS superintendent, Dr. Lawrie, was there. They posed a variety of questions. They will, Dr. Lawrie spoke with Dr. Lawrie, spoke with Mr. Drolay. They're going to be participating in a committee forum, so we can get those education-specific answers. They are not here this evening, so I don't think it's fair for the board to answer that. But though there were specific questions regarding that, the Descent of Officials said they would have a specific meeting for education as well. Today was pretty holistic and a variety of things.
There's going to be multiple meetings, I understand.
So decision-making will probably be in collaboration with the school committee and the superintendent.
We know there's not a lot of answers that we can give today, and we get that. One other thing, and we do thank you, and we know this isn't easy. One other thing, though, is like, Jim, you have mentioned, state police are going to take care of this from a policing standpoint. That's great news, understanding how they're going to do kind of patrols, that sort of thing. Because I talked to a police officer yesterday, and I was like, could they possibly do a detail for the playgrounds so people with kids can bring their kids and they could attend the meeting? And he's like, that's a wonderful idea, but unfortunately, we don't have the resources. And I was like, officer, not to be cynical, but what happens when 450 more people get here? So, once again.
They're all good questions.
Thank you for the time.
I just wanted to comment one thing on the schools, because I don't, I'm not, you know, it's above my pay grade to get into how that's going to work, and we have to have the professionals, the superintendents, the state work that out. But I am on the King Philip School Committee, and we have experienced this to a lesser degree because of what happened in Plainville. And I believe, Eric, you're here for the school committee as well. I think it's 14 students. Both of us may be wrong, but I think we've picked up a small number, granted, of 14 students in King Philip, all with language issues. And the superintendent worked out a plan and a strategy, and we have received funding for those students. And he's been able to move, Spanish is a program that's taught at the high school lab. So he's able to rearrange the teaching staff to accommodate those students, and it's actually worked out seamlessly. I think if you were to ask any of the parents who are associated with any of these classes, they would tell you that it has not been at all a problem and is in some respects maybe been a good experience. Granted, it's 14 kids, and it's in a school that has more diverse programs and opportunities to fill that in, but we were able to work there very seamlessly.
Having said that, I mean, and maybe this is the wrong way to approach, but like, have they thought about having kids who, we have 200 kids who speak Spanish, so let's all put them in the same school system, so we don't have to have attendant languages in the school system?
I have no idea.
Fair enough. Thanks for the time.
You're welcome.
Stephanie Ackley, 52 Board Ministry. First, Kevin, welcome. I guess I can start by asking, or stating, this isn't obviously an ideal situation for any of us to be in, dumped on our lap. In many ways, in one, it's going to be a challenge. But some of those challenges existed prior to this current situation that we're in, specifically the strain on the education system and the classroom sizes. Knowing that the school system was feeling strained prior to this situation, is there any way that the town would be able to fast-track certain grants, funding, or MSDA loans, for example, that would then offset the cost to the taxpayers and the residents and would come in from the state, so it's not a doom-bloom situation for the residents that are here? Is there any word on, you know, the type of loans that we could acquire or, you know, any idea on how that could work for us?
We've thought, we've already explored that. We don't have all the answers, but we're exploring opportunities. A very good suggestion, there are a lot of grants out there that are going to alleviate some of this for us, and we're going to pursue every opportunity we have. But we didn't get a chance this morning to get into the one part that I wanted to talk about, which was the finance. We ran out of time, and rightfully so, there was a lot of other stuff to talk about. But all of this does, in some regards, come down to our ability to fund these issues. And so our number one goal right now, at least for me, that's the neighborhood I live in, is to get as much out of this as I possibly can, whether it be through grants, state funding, I don't care. We can't solve this without funding. Chief can't meet all of the needs if he doesn't have staff or the number of ambulances he needs to get there. Kids can't learn if they don't have the number of teachers and we don't have the space to put them in. I mean, these are all valid questions. And while it doesn't solve all the problems, we can't solve any of them if we don't have those funding. So we're going after every dime we can get, and that's why, as I said in the beginning, if we start this adversarially, it's going to be a lot harder. You know, we've got to go at this somewhat in a cooperative way, or we're not going to get anywhere. So we're going to do our very best, we can be sure.
Right, so that's understandable, and I think, you know, with the five-year capital budget that's been in place, knowing that Freeman Kennedy addition was sort of slated for the next big project in town, and the dollar amount that was attached to that project, you know, maybe that's something that the town can strive for, to have that project either paid for in a large portion or something along those lines.
I just wanted to add to that.
When the Lieutenant Governor called town officials, that was one of the first things that he brought up, was spaces, you know, looking for opportunities to partner with the state to help address some of those concerns. We didn't get a chance, as Jim said, to talk about in the morning, but the afternoon, we did emphasize it again. I will be working with our select boards, school committees, and our relative departmental leaders to come up with a comprehensive list of some issues and concerns that this may be exacerbated by, and how we can partner with the state to help try to address it for the town as well. And they did, they were receptive to that, but we will work to that, and that was a priority message that we give to Lieutenant Governor and to the team, Dante.
Wonderful. And I guess a last question. From an administrative perspective, this is probably a question for you, Justin, or possibly, Anita, with your school education and experience, you know, we're going to need staff to apply for those grants and those funds. Are we capable of doing that in Norfolk, or is that something that is going to be, you know, in partnership with? I mean, as a former town employee, correct, I know how many people are under that roof. And so it's concerning to me, and I don't mean that against your administration whatsoever, just knowing that, you know, who's going to do the work and how's it going to get done? Are we going to be looking for, you know, people to step up, volunteers to help push these things along and make sure that we're getting the absolute most that we can?
That's a great question. I think in our previous board meetings, we've talked a lot about being aggressive with grants. This team here in Norfolk, it's small, but it's robust. We are very aggressive in trying to get grants. I have a great departmental team. We try to get grants. We've been very successful getting grants and earmarks. It will, it's a lot of work, but we're committed to doing that. We will partner with the state to see what opportunities they can do to assist us, but we're willing to rise to the challenge, and we've done it before, and we will continue to do that.
I guess I have a follow-up question to that, if you don't mind. Knowing that you're going to be utilizing a website as a forum for all of this information that's out there, is there a way for you to be able to create even a spreadsheet or some type of document or running list of the funds that become available through state, federal, and local grants? Or, you know, just so that, you know, the residents have an idea of exactly how much money we receive from state, local, or other grants, and maybe have a dollar sign to look at and understand that that is an actual offset to what would otherwise be their taxes or other burdens in town?
I think that's a great suggestion. The select board has really tried to prioritize transparency in government, so we definitely can do that. That's a great suggestion, and we will do that.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity for this one.
Eric Harmon, 314 Main Street, Norfolk. I am one of the representatives of Norfolk on the King Philip School Committee. I understand that this, I guess, was a little bit, I didn't understand before, that this is an emergency overflow facility. They're going to be there for 45 to 60 days, so that's not like the facilities in Plainville or in Franklin. Do we have a comparable facilities that we can talk to to understand how this works? And you also said something about one of those facilities closing recently. I don't understand how they're deciding to open and close facilities.
Well, that part I can't answer. But there are four of the facilities that they mentioned today. One was in Roxbury, one was in Chelsea, help me, there was...
Cambridge.
Cambridge, thank you. Cambridge, believe it or not. They're closing the one in Roxbury and they're opening one up in Lexington. Those facilities are similar to our facility. We also learned that there are 90 towns that are housing people. I had no idea that there were many. So it's different than what's in Plainville. It's not the same set of circumstances. It's not even the same type of facility. They're not, they're not running it just 45 to 60 days. They're putting families in there who they hope to have placed within 45 to 60 days. What they've told us is that the facility will remain open from 12 to six months. That's what they've told us. Thank you. Yep.
Hi, good evening. Tom Brady, 11 Freedom Trail. Anita, you mentioned that sorting homeless from non-homle students is illegal, so acknowledging that fact, it is a requirement for all students to attend a Massachusetts public school to be immunized. Are there any students, or do we know that all of these students have been vaccinated with standard vaccine protocol?
Again, what we were told this morning. They have all been vetted. They have all received proper documentation. They've all had background checks. There are no criminals. There are no sex offenders. They went through a long list, and it included health requirements, that there are no one that has any diseases, immune deficiencies, that have been vaccinated. All of those things were told to us this morning, so at this point, at least, it's taken that they were.
So they've all been vaccinated?
That's what we were told.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Dr. Tayside Leam, 31 Fredericksen Road. I just want to ask specifically if there is a plan in place for bullying for these potential students, because based on the comments I've seen on our community page, the racist comments, the comments that were just made about educating the students in prison, or sending all the Spanish students off to another district, my concern is that there will, these students will be ostracized, especially if their parents are speaking in terms like this in front of their kids. And also, as, you know, a town that's 90% white, it's going to be very apparent who these children are. And as, you know, one of the few black families in this town, I feel obligated to ask this question, because I don't want these children to be, you know, targets. So has a plan or has discussion been had around how we can actually welcome these students into our school district, given this is a state and federal requirement to provide access to education to all students regardless of their status? So I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
So, again, we have to say that we don't know anything for sure yet. I've written it down, because it's an excellent question. And I also know in speaking with our Norfolk educators that they're really committed to opening their classrooms and creating a safe space for these kids to be integrated into our school in a really authentic way. It's an excellent question. There should be resources targeted specifically to that end. And so I've written it down, and we'll make sure it happens in future conversations with the state.
If I could just, may I just one more comment on that? Our brethren in Plainville have been really helpful in helping us understand some of those issues. And we have probably five, six pages of not only just issues, but things that have happened. And one of the things that has happened is exactly what you would hope would happen in Plainville. They've been integrated in the system, they've been welcomed. It's been an educational experience for both sides of the equation. It's become a good experience. And Mr. Harmon, who's my fellow committee member with K P, that's been the exact results as well. You know, that has been one of the positives that's come out of this process, so hopefully it will continue.
Good evening. Benjamin's Ray, 264 Main Street. My question is, with the students being enrolled into Norfolk as they come into these forty-five to sixty days, the McKinney-Bento homeless shelter law that, as in Massachusetts, when they move out of the town, they're allowed to stay with the option into Norfolk. So if we're an overflow shelter and we keep having family after family roll through this town, they all have the option to stay in Norfolk. These numbers could go up to the hundreds.
So we talked about McKinney-Bento today. We talked about it in, I just wanted them to know that we understood that that was a possible impact for us, just like you're mentioning. So again, it wasn't talked about with solutions, but it was talked about as like, this is something we need to address. How are you looking at where, where are these kids going to be? They talked about rapid movement towards stability, right? Which is what they're hoping for these families. And so we talked about kids being disrupted, like becoming part of a classroom community and then moving out. And then our responsibility specifically related to McKinney-Bento. They wrote it down. It'll be on a future conversation. We don't have the answer yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Hi, Peter Schwalter, Brett's Farm Road in Norfolk. I'm just, I have a plan or so. I'm just asking a couple of questions to help about thinking ahead. So the first is, it sounds like this is the folks they're planning to bring over here are vetted. So when will the information on the exact count of students, their ages, their grade levels be provided to give our administrations the best foot forward to plan? That's my first question. Second one afterwards.
A question we can't answer, but we asked.
You did ask.
I don't, they don't know. They made that very clear today, they don't know. I don't think they've identified who, who is not coming. There's seventy-five hundred of them in the list, on the list. So I don't know how they're gonna pick and choose, I have no idea. That is a priority for us, they know that. We can't plan on how to integrate these kids into the system until we have that information, so we don't know. But we're gonna demand that we get it as soon as possible.
Right, right. Summer goes fast, so it's, and it's not an easy thing to plan. So we'd love to be able to plan that, you know, with the best information possible. The other question I had was state funding is, what does it look like for, specifically for educational resources and support? We're going to need incremental support. And what does state funding look like in other scenarios similar to ours for education?
You mean in general terms?
Yeah, so a per pupil amount? Is it, is there additional expertise in terms of like language support, things like that that state offers to some of these other sites and centers that Norfolk can expect and anticipate?
We know that there has been a per pupil contribution to the town for every student that comes into our system from, through this process. I think it's a hundred and, I don't wanna quote a number, it's not, I don't wanna do the wrong number, but there is an amount that is state-funded for every student that comes into one of our schools. I know we've received that at King Philip, and I know the Plainville, I think, I don't wanna speak for them, but I think they've received it, but I know we have a K P. The broader issue of state funding, we could spend three days in here talking about because that's the core of our problem in funding our schools, but we will get into that tonight. But yeah, there is a compensation, and we're hoping that we can get more than what they're currently allowing. Because we have a bigger issue.
Right, exactly.
Plainville has the space to be able to accommodate it, we do not.
Exactly. In the conversation today, was there any spirit or intent from the state around the support for education?
Yes, affirmative yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Gwen Crater, Royals End Road. My questions are really around education and more so are teachers. First and foremost, I know there are several teachers in Norfolk as well as the King Philip area that have been told that their slot might not be here last now as a teacher in the upcoming season, and that was prior to this announcement. Have those teachers been given a peace of mind that they will have a role in the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Anita, pass it to me to say that's a question directly best for Ingrid Alardi and the schools. We can't do that at the school committee in Ingrid's system.
Second, I know that you're talking about the additional funding that it's going to take. There's also a great strain on our existing teachers and resources. Is there any plan or discussion around what we're going to do to provide better pay or benefits to the existing teachers and all the extra hard work it's gonna take?
I'll have to direct that to Dr. Alardi, Richard O'Leary.
So I can show the games in here. Thank you.
Hi, Ron Duffy for King upon Road. So my child is on an education I P in the school, which is a negotiated education plan. And so does this situation change the services that have been agreed upon? And would it allow the schools to renegotiate or reduce the services that we've created?
No, the plan is a legal contract between you and the school of services they guarantee to provide to your child. The only change that I can imagine, and again, this is maybe a Dr. Alardi question, so if I'm out of my lane, you could tell her it was my fault. But the only question that might possibly impact is if it was a change of a provider, right? They might be looking at how they allocate their resources, but the services indicated in that plan are guaranteed. It's a legal binding contract, which we want you and the school have together decided what your child needs to succeed. And we're committed to that.
Okay, so there's one.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ron Olberg, sixty-nine Main Street. Sixty-plus years of paying taxes in Norfolk. This week. But anyhow, I've seen it grow, you know, from no sidewalks at all on Main Street. Now there's one on one side. That's a good thing. If, if by chance, I can't imagine the people who are boarding there, so to speak, I can't imagine them not wanting to go up and pass all the beautiful houses that we have in Norfolk. Let alone take a trip through the new houses, which are absolutely gorgeous, that people work extremely hard for, whose taxes may goes through the roof because of our schools, okay? And I have been a teacher for twenty-five years, okay? And the truth of the matter is, you've got to come up, I mean, you people necessarily, but there has to be a solution. And I think one suggestion is if you negotiate something, and I don't know if there's any room for negotiating with, I won't name a name, but the state, you know? But if you find a crack in the armor, you know, my advice is grab it, take it, see what you can come up with, okay? We've done pretty good over the years, when you think about though, how far we've come, okay? So I'll keep it short, leave it on hopefully a happy note. But no one in Norfolk's been too happy in the last week. I can guarantee you that. Thank you very much.
One thing, sir, I do want to address. Once again, we've tried to make it clear, you know, we are gonna try and leverage this for Norfolk. The administrative team did we ask specifically, and they showed a willingness, they're bidding for their provider, they shared a willingness to have their subcontractors be businesses from the town to help our local economy. So they did share that information, they were willing to partner with the town there. So we are absolutely looking at all avenues to make sure it's a benefit to the town as well. Is the gentleman here from Verizon by the chance?
Yes.
Come on up, sir. Give us two minutes of business. It is on our agenda officially for six o'clock, and we have to conform to that. This will really be a lively conversation for you. Why in the world the Board of Slaughter has to approve a poll being moved from one place to another is beyond me. But that's the law, so go for it, sir.
This is the most well-attended poll here. I trust you folks have the maps already in the pens.
I'm sorry, the poll hearings is not only they're at our offices, but they're actually public hearings, believe it or not. So we need to take a vote to open the public hearing. May I have that motion, please?
I move that we open a public hearing in accordance with Chapter one sixty-six, second to Section twenty-two of Massachusetts on the law and on a petition from Verizon New England and EverSource Energy and Star Electric for joint poll location to grant petitioner's joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain polls, wires, and cables together with anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Set polls to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan marked Plan Number One A six S G four E dated April second, two thousand twenty-four filed here with the pond along and across the following public ways or, a public way or ways of said town. Do you see?
Hi, sir.
Hi, all in favor?
Hi.
This is what we have to deal with on a daily basis. Please, sir.
Sure. The purpose of the poll is to support new construction intended for right next to forty-one Turner Street. I don't know where the address is gonna be. I know that the D P W director had asked that the poll be placed ten feet off the road and on the other side of the rock wall. I just came back from the site, took my measurements. The stake is on the other side of the rock wall, approximately ten feet.
Are D P W's directors?
Yes.
Do you have, you wanna have a remodel, or are we good?
That sounds great. I will go out and check the stake, but on that.
Believe it or not, this is a public hearing, so we can have public input. Everybody wanna talk about a poll? Seeing done, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, where were we? Sorry, I gotta interrupt you, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Miller, three Strawberry Lane. Thank you for taking all of our questions today. I had another question about special education from all the towns I've talked to. We actually just moved here the day before school started, and we really specifically found Norfolk because of the special education services you have and how you do it is a unique and really amazing way. And so many kids in other towns are actually being given I O U's, like I O U forty hours of occupational therapy because we don't have a teacher. And this is happening, it happened in our last community, and so here we are. I talked to the Department of Education yesterday, and they were like, um, yeah, no, it's legally binding. But if there's no teacher, you may, might, maybe be given some other, it just didn't really sound great. And I know it's really unique to Norfolk is these, which, H O D, I only know the H O D, I've only been in here once, these small specialized education classrooms where children get to go together with four, or five, six other kids, which is the only way these children can learn. I'm hearing through rumors, those are the spaces that are gonna be at risk. Because when you look at the whole, it's gonna be, let's shut down some of these really special specialized spaces. So is there a commitment to keeping these spaces open? So there's no conversations about closing any spaces at this time. So there have been zero conversations saying, what about this room? What about, we are not having, we're not ready even to think about that. We are committed to doing what's right and best for kids in Norfolk, they always have been. That's, that's why you're here. There, I mean, if Dr. Alardi was here, she would echo that. So obviously, if for some reason our occupational therapist moved to Spain and we didn't have an occupational therapist, we would have, and we weren't able to find one, then... So that's why they can't, like, the lawyers make them say that, right? But is that likely to happen? No, and Norfolk has consistently, continually given those services to kids in a way that's admirable.
One thing I wanna add to that as well, Dr. Alardi did commit, and I'm sure her school committee as well, to having another meeting with the board to answer educational questions. I'm sure the school committee and the select board scheduled something where you can have those education questions answered from the school committee and Dr. Alardi. And I'm sure that Rich O'Leary and K P would love to be involved with that.
Thank you. I just have a statement, I don't really have any questions, is that okay? Okay, so I just wanted to begin with a full disclosure. I am a member of the Norfolk School Committee. However, all of my comments made tonight are made entirely in my personal capacity. In no way the positions of any of the school committee. I also wanna begin by sharing how much I love this town. I feel like we have such a wonderful community. I've seen so many compassionate, thoughtful comments and plans to come together like we always do to help those in need. I know that if it comes to helping to provide people who are less fortunate than us with basic necessities or other needs, our community will be there with kindness and compassion. I truly hope that as we move forward, we can have healthy and open conversations without resorting to generalizations or disparaging comments about anyone, including those who are planning to be placed in the shelter, and especially in regards to children who by no fault of their own are in this situation. That being said, every single person in this community has an absolute right to be angry. I know you guys said that you were angry, you're not going to work on anger. That's perfectly fine, I need to vent a little bit angry, and I feel like it might, or some people might resolve with my feelings. I, I myself am incredibly angry. I am in no way angry at the people who need shelter. I am angry at our state government, who has made this decision and the total lack of disregard to even consult our town leaders. And to discuss the types- To discuss the types of serious issues something like this would cause for our small town. I am angry that the word temporary keeps getting thrown around as if the state will be shelling out funds to fix up the correctional facility only to vacate it nine months later. Stalman was told the same about a hotel that was converted to a temporary shelter. They just signed a three-year contract to keep it going. Please don't lie to us and don't treat us like we're stupid. This decision was long planned out. It was not something that the state suddenly decided this past weekend would be a good idea. But it was something that they decided to hide from anyone with any knowledge of or decision-making capabilities within this town. That shows a total lack of respect and disregard for everyone in this town. If you had done any due diligence in consulting our town officials, you would have known that we are a small, semi-rural community with no significant infrastructure and very little commercial. We have one stoplight in the whole town. We have one elementary school servicing, well, two, but serving just over, under a thousand children. We have one ambulance available at any given time. We have a small police force and a small fire department. Most streets don't have sidewalks or streetlights. Nearly all doctors around here don't take mass help, and our closest E R is over twenty minutes away. We don't even have a grocery store. The proposition to increase our town's population by four percent overnight is preposterous. Our state loves to talk about sustainable growth and about responsible growth. All development plans on all levels are beholden to these buzzwords. How is something like this sustainable or responsible? My main concern obviously falls on the impact on our schools. Our administration, school committee, and fellow community members have been working tirelessly over the past several years planning for the projected increase in enrollment slated over the next ten years. The projections of an increase in grade size of just five to ten students over the next year warrants such an issue in terms of spacing in our schools that we will likely be asking our community to foot a bill for millions of dollars for some solution that provides space for additional classrooms. We are maxed out in capacity. We currently have support staff making their office and server rooms so that every room can be used for instruction. We rotate between losing our music room and the prospect of losing our art room to accommodate additional classrooms. We've pushed class sizes to the higher end compared to our other peer districts to accommodate all of our children. The bottom line is we don't have the space. I know the government loves to simply throw money at a problem in the expectation that it will be fixed, but that won't work if we don't have the space. If it is true that families with children are being prioritized for this shelter, I think it is safe to assume a hundred and fifty school-aged children, possibly seventy to eighty in our K through six district. That is nearly two additional students per grade, per class. If we can't add additional classrooms, so the only solution seems like it would be to increase class sizes. Now we are considering adding additional children onto the plate of our already stretched-too-thin teachers and expecting it just to work? It is not doom and gloom to be incredibly concerned at this prospect. If this were to happen, simply from a teacher-to-student ratio standpoint, it will harm the quality of education Norfolk is able to provide. If an assumption is correct for a hundred and fifty new students in Massachusetts is correct in their statement that there are two thousand children living in these overflow shelters enrolled in Massachusetts school, that means that a town of eleven thousand people, which is just point one-six percent of the total population state of Massachusetts, will be told to educate seven and a half percent of all of these children. That is not sustainable, and that is not responsible.
Wait a second, can I ask a favor? Would you give us a copy of what you wrote?
Whoa.
Please.
This wasn't to target you or make people angry at you. This obviously is not your problem. You're creating it, so...
Please, please send that. And the only comment I will make is you said, "Please don't lie." You have a guarantee that this board will know.
I know.
Why is this... Why do we fight back?
And please, please, come to the microphone and speak, please.
Who should be pushing back on this?
Or take less people. Can we sprinkle a little more?
Yeah, we're well-walled.
I mean, we just don't have what it takes to do this. I would pop there if you'd let me, so I know it's...
We, we have gone an hour and 15 minutes in orderly fashion, and you guys have been delivered. Let's see if we can't finish this in the same manner, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Salander, Level 28, Robin Road. So I wanted to bring up two points specifically. Uh, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then when I heard the comment about lawyers, I, I realized I was a lawyer and why I don't like lawyers. Uh, so my first question is, is on a contract, right? You talked about the IEP, and IEP is a contract. All contracts void or voidable. So I think what would be helpful would be the protection of those kids that are on IEPs, if the school committee could provide some sort of guidance on what things could possibly void an IEP or make an IEP voidable. So that's number one. Number two, I think what would be helpful for the town would be to know the impact and the difference that having these additional folks in town, what that does to EMS response times. I'll give you a specific example. My daughter suffers from several, uh, anaphylactic allergies, where every minute matters. If the response times are going to slow down when she has an allergic reaction, that is obviously of a significant life-threatening impact to my family and my daughter. Uh, so I'd like to understand, one, how response times are going to change, and then, number two, how you're going to mitigate those response times, to keep them the same or make them as better with the amount of people.
Thank you. I don't want to put a lot of our time on this on the spot, but I think that's a question. It's a valid question, and our chief is here. Chief, are you in a position to comment to that?
All right. Um, so while I can't give you a specific number, um, I can tell you since, you know, we got the news or I found out Saturday officially, um, you know, I've called my colleagues that have shelters in their communities. I've called mistakenly a couple of communities that didn't, but they were able to share that they were doing a lot more mutually than the communities that had them. Uh, we are one of those communities. We actually support Franklin. We go to Franklin, which really a lot anyway, but we did have a little bit of a tip with their shelter. Um, I understand that our circumstance is a little bit different. Uh, that's what the state is shared with us. We're going to have a, you know, different, uh, we won't have those people that are, you know, their trimester and those kind of things. But I will say this, so regardless, uh, you know, the different shelter sites and the towns that I was able to talk to, we can expect of, between a 5 and 10% increase in our call line, just with that facility. And that will impact your response times. Uh, you know, right now, our service model is we staff one and a half ambulances. So we have four people on shift. We have a very good callback system. Uh, you know, I have a wonderful staff that's very passionate about what they do, and they do a lot to, to fill gaps. So we're able to have our second ambulance and staff it at about a 90% clip using callback personnel, but the, the problem that I foresee is with adding that many people, and many of those coming from, you know, or being asylum seekers or being from another country where, you know, maybe they haven't had preventative healthcare or healthcare at all, there's been no prenatal care, those kind of things, that is going to impact us. We are going to end up responding there. Um, and, you know, our service, for me to proactively handle that, I need to staff two ambulances all the time and not have to burden be on callback, because what I think a lot of people don't understand is, is that if my ambulance goes, your risk on the fire side goes up with it, because you have two qualified, you know, certified firefight paramedics that are leaving the town for at least an hour. You know, since nobody's closed, my turnaround time is much slower. Um, I know there was a comment about the EMS system and the healthcare system. We're already, uh, impacted by the other communities. Milford, Franklin, we go to Milford right now for transports. It's not uncommon for my personnel to be holding the wall for 30 minutes until they can find an available bin or something like that. So I have to account for that, so I, well, I can't give you an exact number. I do know that it will definitely impact our response time, without question, because the likelihood of us having an available ambulance is, is going to be decreased, because we're going to be out responding for what our normal response is, which are one and a half worse. We are able to deliver you the services that, you know, that you've grown accustomed to, and to provide that high level of service. If I'm adding 450 people, uh, then that's going to add an extra burden, and that one and a half model doesn't quite work.
Is there...
That's everything the chief said to us to you today, we told the state this morning.
So is it possible, just like your Oscar Ray, like, just, just seeking this through? There are private...
So you've got to go to the microphone, please.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Question about this. Yeah, so there are private, uh, Rich Salander from Robin Road, thank you for that, right? There are private ambulance companies, like, around. If they're able to subcontract out food vendors and, uh, you know, medical professionals, is it possible to, to subcontract out a paramedic or some sort of third-party ambulance company under the same premise, so that they're there and it's not taking away from your resources?
So I can share with you that currently for non-emergent transports, all of the prison facilities in our town, Pondville Corrections and MCI Norfolk use private ambulance service, but it is not uncommon for them to call us, because they don't have the capacity or the ability to provide the level of service. So while that may be an option, the low bidder probably really isn't going to be able to meet the demand, and we're probably going to get called anyway. Um, that's just me being truly transparent and candid, like, I, you know, it, it's happened where there's been issues or somebody needing to be transported from Pondville or from MCI Norfolk, and technically, we're supposed to have right of first refusal anyway on any emergency transport, because there is, there is some funding or there's, you know, we can recruit some funds in providing the service. You know, there's, there's a portion of EMS building that we recruit, so, um, but I would love to entertain that. I would love to discuss that further with, when we have our discussions and more meetings with the state, because there has to be a way to alleviate the burden on our services. There absolutely has to be. So yes, we'll definitely be discussing that, and that is something I'll put on the table. Uh, but I do have to understand that that also brings into question my, my labor force, because that's, that's a change of working conditions, and now you're having, you know, I have a union that is in place and is, I have qualified professionals that know what they're doing and know how to provide this service. So to bring a private in here to take that from them or take that order from them is also a problem, and it's, uh, you know, it's something that, you know, we have to approach and look at all of that as potential options or solutions.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd be sorry to ask, uh, that lady that spoke before, would be considered wrong to go in. (laughter) Is that a question? No joke. Uh, so my question about the, uh, facility, had, we told, you know, 150 families, 450 people, is that, is that a cap? Could it go up to 600, uh, in two years, or if it stays open, higher, or is that supposed to be a cap for us?
They told us that the maximum capacity is 430.
That's it?
That's what they said.
Okay.
My second point is, uh, I'd like to seriously consider this. I know you're maybe far out, but in getting compensation from the state, I think it not only should be money and funds, uh, but I would like to have you consider asking them if we could be exempt from Chapter 40B for as long as that facility is open, because I think that this sector is... (applause) So I, I'd like to consider that. It may be out there, but it's certainly worth asking. All I can say is no, and tell them you've done our part, and Chapter 40B would only exacerbate this situation, right? So I'd like to consider that.
You caught me at the beginning of the meeting and asked me that question, and I'll commit to you, and then we will ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, we did ask that question. It was one of the listed questions that I sent to the state. Um, we are going to look at every option, just as you said, not only monetary, but every option. That was a question that I included as part of an overall, uh, group of questions from public safety, education, and myself. That question was on, sir.
With respect to, uh, the bid, in what capacity is the town of Norfolk involved in the drafting of the IFB?
Zero. In terms of the bidding of the site?
Correct.
It's a, it's a state-owned facility. They, they're going to do their own bidding. We're not involved at all.
And so there's absolutely no way that you have the ability to craft or help craft the language that's being included in the IFB whatsoever?
No, they're actively doing it, and they're expecting a good response this Friday.
So the bid's already out?
Yeah, it's been out.
Okay, so with that being said, um, how are they going to incorporate any of the concerns that have been brought forward tonight in moving forward if they're already working on drafting of, of...
They don't. They're not. They don't care.
I think the bid is largely focused on the provider at site. This is one of the differences, for example, this overflow site and a hotel site, for example. Plainville Hotel Site, there was no 24/7 or provider services allocated. They realized that probably was an issue for them, so at overflow sites, they've made sure they had a, a service provider that directly was involved with transportation, uh, security, and different logistics like that, meals and so forth. Uh, so from their experience, they needed to get a service private, service provider in place, uh, pretty quickly. And they, and they are selecting from a group of providers they've utilized at their other sites already. Um, so that's why they're being very proactive there. Um, I can't speak for the state, but we do know they're going to, as, as they did commit, and as Jim and the board said, they're going to have a committee forum. They have engaged with other communities before, um, and, and we'll see how it goes around.
So I guess to follow up specifically what this gentleman, um, had, had mentioned regarding, um, you know, the services, right? Transportation was included in that bid. Um, services like meals, um, ambulances and so forth could potentially have been included in that bidding, or in that bid package, to help offset the burden of, you know, what, what would have come to our, um, police and fire department. Um, it's, it's shameful on the state, and I understand it's out of your control at this hand, but, you know, if they, if they were aware that this was happening, I mean, I, I'm, I'm familiar with how long it takes to put a bid package together. I'm familiar with the contracts, the engineers, the peer review, the specialists that are involved. Um, so it, it surprises me that it is all of a sudden now on our lap, knowing the time that it takes to put a package together, um, and then have it already out to bid. You're telling, you're, you're saying that there are people bidding on this contract actively as we speak.
Yes. Yes, and, uh... The only thing I can say of that is it became very clear this morning that this has been in process for some time.
Are you aware of when it advertised?
No, I am not. Uh, they, they said that the contracts are out, they're expecting to bid back.
They have not made a decision, but they're...
Right, these, these, these programs don't just develop overnight.
Correct.
And so clearly, this has been in progress. Um, we learned about it Friday night, the best I could tell.
Um, so with that being said, and knowing that it's already out, um, is there, um, is there any way for the town to suggest an addendum to this contract that they have, or an addendum to the IFB, so that the town has the opportunity to get what we need out of this contract? Not just, here's, here's your, here's your IFB, we'll pick from the list of state contractors, here you go, Norfolk, take it, right? We should have the opportunity to be able to say, these are the things that we specifically need out of that, um, the services contract, and it's not just meals, and it's not just transportation to their appointments or wherever else they need to go. It's, it's to offset the burden to this town. We also have school buses, so if they're going to be bussed, you know, it, we, we need those things included in that contract. And I would, I would be, um, I would be disappointed to see this town not push to recommend and get town council involved to try and see if there's any way for us to have an amendment made, um, and an addendum put out on that contract to be able to include services that Norfolk specifically needs.
Those are all great suggestions, and when we learned of this, uh, Friday or Saturday, and, and, you know, when we all kind of settled back and figured out what to do, we've been working for the last three days in composing a list of all the considerations that we think are important to this town. That list is extensive. It is extensive, and it includes a lot more than what we've talked about here tonight. The first meeting we had with the state was today. We had two meetings. I participated in the first one, which was other people. Anita participated in the second, with our legislators. This is a work in progress. I'm sure there are going to be multiple conversations, but our list is long and it is comprehensive, and we're going to push every darn thing on that list we can. Uh, we, we didn't just show up today unarmed. We have a long list of demands that we want, demands is, oh, yeah, demands, that we want from the state to get as much as we can to mitigate this issue. So, yes, we, we're going to push every avenue we can.
When is the bid opening?
Yeah, the, the one you just talked about, I mean, again, we just learned things this morning.
When is the bid opening?
I'm sorry?
When is the bid opening?
Uh, no, they did not tell us.
So if it's been advertised with the state and it's out for bidding currently, and you have no idea when the bid opening is?
Well, let's answer what they were... What they told us this morning was that they have sent bids out for these various contracting facilities with the, uh, security and food services and things of that nature. They did not tell us when they're opening, I recall. Do you, Justin?
Seventeen.
Did, oh, well, you heard this afternoon. Okay, I'm, I'm a morning lady.
Correction, correction. The bid is opening on Friday, and this is for the service providers.
Could you step up to the mic?
Service providers... We were told today that the bid is opening on Friday, and that is for the service providers only. Those service providers provide the overall services that they're providing at the 10 sites today, and then they will go up and allocate to subcontractors for food services, for transportation, all the other services that are going to be allocated to this particular facility. So those service providers have been vetted already. They're already in the comp buy system, the state bidding system that we have, that any vendor goes to to, uh, you know, bid on a state contract. Those are the service providers that have already been vetted and will be allowed to bid on this particular site on Friday, so that's when the bid opens.
Um, I guess to follow up, Mr. Vaughn, since you have the answers, um, when was that advertised? Are you aware? Mr. Vaughn, are you aware of when that was advertised?
So I... I'm just regurgitating information that was told to us today in select board. Nita was on the call, uh, along with Justin. Uh, I have not been on comp buys. I, I work on comp buys, but I have not gone on that bid portal site. I don't know if anyone here was able to go on it and see the actual bid solicitation.
I think what was implied today in this, I'm just...
That's supposed to be the central right...
Uh, this, this was advertised, January, on comp buys, and these are existing providers that they had already vetted, and now they're trying to select which provider for the site now.
I specifically asked for those providers that are providing those services to the 10 sites today, so that we can get information on those providers to know what potential bidders will be, uh, allowed to bid on this site and potential, uh, suitors, uh, at the end of the day, so...
Thank you, um, but I guess to follow up with my question, there's, there's opportunity, and again, I think we need to get town council, we need, we need legal assistance on this, right? We have an opportunity both as a town, our state rep is here, um, we need to push back to make sure that that contract can be amended to include the things that Norfolk specifically requires. that Norfolk specifically requires. I'm going to say it again because I think it's that important to make sure we are, we are, we are greatly impacted beyond other communities because of the size, because of the strain on our school systems. And so it's imperative that we, you know, seek an amendment to this contract and make sure that in the services that are included, we have the opportunity to support our firefighters and our EMTs and our ambulances, the strain that exists. I would hate to see someone in town, a taxpaying resident, have anaphylactic shock but not have the ability to have mutual aid or anything else because we're off servicing other people. The ability for, you said it was transportation, food services, et cetera. If that's included, and now it's going to be funded by the state as part of this contract, there's nothing that says that they couldn't have a 24/7 ambulance on call, just like they would security, correct? Right, so those are sort of the things that I think Norfolk should be seeking to include in this bid package, and again, I just can't stress that enough. This is the opportunity. And if we're going to take all opportunities, as you've all mentioned, start here, start now.
Hi, John Seaver, 35 Rock Road again. You know, I think we all started off with this meeting, and everybody was kind of playing coy to kind of figure things out and feel each other out a little bit. And with all due respect, I think we've had enough feeling out. You obviously have not been informed, which is not your fault. I think we all understand that you have been kept in the dark. What we are having a hard time understanding is what are you going to do when this goes sideways? Because every time that it's occurred, Franklin, Kingston, Taunton, I mean, how many do we have to name that it hasn't been executed properly? What makes us think that Norfolk, Massachusetts is this magical place where all of a sudden we're going to get it right? Okay? And what I'm tired of in this community is because we care and because we're looking out for our own, we're racist. When did, when did responsibility become racism? And I know you don't want to have this discussion here, but we're going to have it. So the fact of the matter is, is you have thousands of people in this community that are here for pretty much one reason: their family and their kids. The only thing we care about is our family and our kids. I don't care about your emotions. I don't care about the governor's emotions. I care about my own. What are you going to do to take care of your own? And I don't know isn't going to work anymore. We need more. And if you don't have an answer, I want you to get angry, and I want you to stay angry. This isn't going to go away, but maybe, just maybe, we have a shot to make enough noise where she backs off, where she does get it out fast enough. Because let's face it, we do not want it here. We don't, and it doesn't make us bad people. It doesn't make me not compassionate. It doesn't make me a bad father, okay? Take care of your own. It's not a disease. It's strength. We're better than sleeping on the streets. Where do we, where do we have the compassion for that? We don't. We need you. We cannot do this ourselves. This community will not recover from this, okay? This is not something that you can wish away. What are we going to do when the first real crime happens? When someone really gets hurt? When my buddy's kid can't wake up because they're dead? Okay? Are we going to feel good about helping people then? Help our own. Do something to stop it.
I want to thank you all for modeling a civil way of discussing this. I think I have kind of an interesting follow-up to the last person. I just want to say, as I drove up today, it was, and I don't get as many town events as I would like to, so maybe this is really standard, but to see a squad car immediately and then to see such a large police presence was frankly not surprising, but a little alarming. I've lived here, not as long as many of you, but since 2018, and when I have been discussing what's going on, largely I have a question, just like a question for the community, not so much for you all, as I've been discussing what's been going on and just like experiencing what's been going on on Facebook primarily, I've just never felt as unsettled to be here as I have in the last few days because of the lack of stability that I've seen in so much of the discussions. And not much of that has been here tonight, but I really just ask that we are going to have hard conversations across the board, and I just really ask that we please try to make it so that we can all feel safe, because this is a community that I moved here with my husband because we like it a lot, and we've had really positive experiences here. And the last few days have made my husband and I feel really questioning about where we actually are and the people who we're living with, because it's just been really shocking to see a lot of what... I have a comment, like other people have had here, and I haven't been talking for that long. So what I'm literally asking is that we don't yell at each other and that we can please engage carefully, because this is literally only in a, in a stage of like early planning. The fact that things have already gotten so vitriolic, and I will say one more comment, which is that, like, my husband, my mom, and my best friend, when I told them I was, what's been going on and that I was coming to this meeting, all of them expressed concern for their safety because of things that have happened in our country. And so I'm literally asking for people to not do what whoever just yelled at me are doing, because we have to discuss this. And I'm extremely disappointed that we're all asking for stability, that people would expressly reply without stability. And I also just want to say that you in the pink blazer, I think, has made one of the most important comments, because we have to keep the kids here actually safe. And I'm so disappointed with how so many of the adults have acted in this, and obviously kids learn from what they see their parents doing. So if we can please all be adults in this, I would appreciate it. And you can just get in line, up a microphone.
We're down to about 10 minutes, and so somehow we can get back to questions that are here. I think for the most part, you folks have been incredibly civil tonight, and let's see if we just can't finish up that way. So, thank you, sir.
Hi, Alec Moro, Landis Landis. How much money is this they're going to give us to cover fire, the police, and the teachers? Are they giving us any money to hire no, because they're going to be no. More is even following us in the taxpayers' tax school up again.
There is an established policy for other towns where this has happened, where towns have been paid to the towns.
I don't care about that.
We, we, we're going to deal for everything we can get. I wish I had answers for you. You know, I'm, three hours after a conversation, that was the first we got information. We're going after every dime we can get. That's the best I can tell you. I can't answer your question in detail.
So we are going to pay for it, just like, we are going to pay the tax.
Well, sir, look, you...
Oh, we are, we are. We're going to get screwed over.
From our perspective, we're going to deal with what we know and work our way through these mindfields.
Hey, you're left in the dark from the state.
I'm sorry?
You're left in the dark from the state. They're not telling you everything.
Believe me, I know.
Mine is really, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I've had friends on the job, they don't want to move out here to Mathieu, insult the Plainville. This affects everybody. They're not looking out here anymore. These are good families, families like me, all of them, they gone.
The only thing I can promise you, we think, we know. That I promise you. We've got just a couple more, sir.
Rich Villas, 28 Rock Road. I just wanted to offer up a suggestion that I think might be helpful, would be a more comprehensive communication strategy. You know, so for example, I don't know if anyone here has been on COMBIES, I spend a lot of time on it, and it's atrocious. Good luck finding a bid on there. I think what would be helpful would be having something on the website that, as you have discussions, you know, there's like a recap of the discussions that you have each day with, with the different town, with the town officials and the state officials, putting the bid up there so people can see it. I think, you know, leveraging that, putting that out there, making it known to people, it'll actually help us as, you know, as people in this town to understand what it is that you're seeing, and it helps us be a part of it and possibly provide different insight and different opinions. For example, clearly that individual had a lot of background on, you know, public procurements and public bids. You know, there might be something there that, you know, that where we can help, you know, provide insight and help kind of get to that, you know, agreement with the state eventually. So I was hoping you'd just kind of give us more information in real time instead of in these cases.
Absolute promise. Thank you.
One second, Peter. Just to piggyback on that, just to this room, like Norfolk is an amazing community full of so many ideas and so many interesting questions, and Facebook is not the way to communicate with your board. So if you have ideas, please come to our meetings or shoot us an email. If you have ideas, do not communicate it with us through Facebook, because we might not see it or we might not go on. So there is a wealth, like this gentleman just said, of knowledge and information or good questions that you thought of that maybe we didn't think of it, and we are trying to think of everything we can. But please reach out to your board. I don't think we can have any more people in line, I'm so sorry. I don't think we can take any more questions because we're so close on time, but please don't use Facebook to communicate with your board.
I just want to add, I have returned every phone call and responded to every email except for the one from the guy in Rhode Island that I get, and I did get one from Rhode Island. I will, I will be glad to communicate calmly, really, please, I will respond, and we'll take all the collective wisdom you guys can provide. We've got time, just for a couple more. Peter, please.
Yes, I continue to think about our teachers. They are doing a lot already, very little resources, and we're asking them to do more, even without this circumstance. We don't want to lose good teachers. All of that to say, exactly, Eric has some good knowledge there, and if you did take her suggestion seriously, please add school resources to that list for the contract, because I don't think the per pupil amounts are going to cover probably what we need. We don't know yet what this goal looks like, but I think we're going to need more than just the standard state per pupil support. So that's my guess. So I can have to say, please consider adding that to the, the list of needs in the contract.
There is, to that mean, ma'am, there's a woman behind you that I know has not spoken. If I could ask her to come forward so that everybody has an opportunity? Thanks.
Hi, Mary Sharpie, 77 Park Street. Curious, are we going to have a liaison or be notified when you are going to meet with state officials? We're kind of behind the egg wall. So if you're having a meeting, is it going to be open to the public when you're, when you're talking with different state officials about what's going to happen?
Most cases, they will not be open to the public. There are a lot of issues around open meeting laws. For example, two of us could not participate in the meetings today. I participated in the first one, Anita participated in the second one. So there are a lot of issues around public meetings in which can and cannot be. So these meetings will not be posted, because the state won't allow that to be posted.
Well, will the state...
There will be community forums. We will hold whatever we need to hold. If we need to do it weekly, we will do it weekly. The state...
We can ask them to come out here and hold their, hold their forums for the public.
We can to get information out, but we can't have meetings with the state that are attended by 300 people. We won't get anywhere.
But will they have a liaison? That will move it?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And will we be notified in advance? Will they have an agenda? And will we be able to share with them what we want to discuss?
Yes. We are really running out of time, so I'll... Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I thought I answered that, I'm sorry.
Hi, Tyson Picken, 31 Ferguson Road. I just want to say again, for all the people that are yelling in this room, I'm also angry. I also have a son, two sons, in the school district. One of them is on an IEP, so I'm also concerned about staffing with our teachers, about resources. I think it's fine to be angry, and what I don't think it's fine to do is yell at people when they're up here at this microphone, or go on Facebook and make racist comments, or walk around with No Shelter t-shirts. What message does that send to our children? So I would ask that everyone be respectful in this room when people get up here and start to speak, because we are all residents of this community, and we are all rightfully concerned, and there's no need for disrespect. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have another meeting, because we have to prepare for town meeting, so please the last two questions, but please make it brief.
Very brief. If the bid closing is Friday, or bid opening deadline, whatever you want to call it, is Friday, I believe, according to procurement laws, it's 72 hours before the last opportunity for questions or possible amendments can be made. We need to be on this immediately, like, we cannot miss this opportunity. We're cutting it extremely close, so...
Do your job!
Yeah, we need, we need to keep that in mind and just be mindful that if we're going to make this happen, if you're going to get what we need, we need town council involved, and we need to take action, like staff, like after town meeting. It has to happen.
Okay. We have one more person, Chris Mann.
Mackenzie Carter, A must come in. Curious if we have legal counsel to the woman's point who just spoke, it's so imperative that we're responding and we're reviewing the contracts and trying to figure out where and how we can respond. Is there legal counsel representing the town in our interests? And they're heavily involved in, you know, the deadlines and whatnot already? Okay, and one quicker question as well. In terms of public safety, I know that you've talked about security. I assume from the way the conversation has gone, you meant, you mean at the prison. Is there room for public safety to expand through the town as well? I know you said there was background checks, and they've been fully vetted. I have a very hard time feeling comfortable with that. Is there room in these contracts to push for public safety throughout the town as well, not just at the prison, to be increased?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that, please choose, both chiefs were on the phone today, on the call today. I'm sure that they're going to look at every opportunity, will ask that question. I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a brief Mr. Closure. Before you leave, please, I just, number one, I want to thank you all for coming. Thank you for that. More importantly, I thank you for your civility and your willingness to listen, and, you know, I live here too. We all live here, so I want to thank you very much for that. You are going to town meeting. I would, just one question. I've seen some comments on Facebook. What is going to take place in town meeting has nothing to do with what you are talking about tonight. Nothing. Town meeting is critical, so please, be objective, vote as you should on the issues that are there, but if you take your anger out on town meeting, you're going to shut the town down, and that's not going to help any of us. Again, thank you, and we'll keep you informed.